I'd like to call to order the June 12th, the July 12th meeting of the Planning, Ascension Parish Zoning Commission. I'm still mixed up from earlier. The records show all Commissioners are present this time. I'd like to ask anyone if you do have a cell phone, please turn it off as it does interfere with the audio. I'd also like to ask that the Commissioners speak into the microphones as well as the staff, the legal counsel, and anyone addressing the Commission. This time I'll go ahead and open up the public comment period. Anyone...
(inaudible)
Yeah? Anyone wishing to speak on any agenda item not up for public hearing, come up and sign in and you'll get your three minutes to speak. And no one wishing to speak? Item four, acceptance of the minutes of the June 14th, 2006 meeting.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion by Mike Bardwell to approve.
Second.
Second by Scott Court, right? Is there any opposition or discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll abstain, I was not here last month.
One abstention, Mr. Julio Dumas. No objections, motion passes. Item five A, zoning review ID 1530.06 for Gary Nugent, located on the south side of River Highlands Drive approximately 12,200 feet east of LA Highway 22. Conservation to crossroads commercial.
Ellen Jackson with McLean &amp; Associates, we're trying to rezone this property from conservation to crossroad commercials to be able to build condominiums. I have the owner here that wishes to speak.
Hi, I'm Linnell Johnson, how are y'all today? This property, I'm sure they have a map? They do. This property is actually located in River Highlands subdivision. You have to travel through Livingston to get to Ascension unless you're not familiar with that area, I figured I'd let you know that. This is the only tract of land in that subdivision that is not zoned, or I can't say zoned, does not have residential lots allocated to it. It's not part of any of the neighborhood associations, it has no restrictions upon it, and it's not a part of any condominium regime that exists on the end of that property. The reason that we've asked to rezone this is because the way it's zoned now, being a conservation area, it limits, as you know, our use of what we can and cannot do with it. What we want to do with it is build condominiums. I've brought pictures and things, if you care, to see that, of what our initial goal is to do. There's also a canal. Marina Highlands runs next to it, and there's a canal that we want to run behind these condominiums so these people can have water access to get out to the Pettier meet, therefore out to the diversion canal.
Comments, questions from Commissioners? Actually, I've got a comment, or a question, I think.
Okay.
Looking at this, I'm kind of curious, and this is just from my own personal information, because I am curious about it, but are you going to tie into an existing sewer system?
Yes. There are X amount of heads there now, nine if I'm correct, or we can service nine? There's a few existing heads there. We have permission tentatively verbally to connect into that system should this go through, and we'll work on that to make sure that falls into place.
Any comments or questions from Commissioners? At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item?
Can I ask you a quick question? I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry. After these public comments come before you, am I able to direct or answer any questions thereafter?
Yes ma'am, you'll have time for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak on this property, please come up and sign in and you'll get your three minutes to speak.
Do I need to leave this?
You can head to Mr. Brock.
The question that I have is...
Please state your name, sir.
My name is Dean Fife, I live at 11280 River Highlands Drive, Santa Moll. I'm a resident that lives across the street from this project that Gary and Linnell would like to get started. The questions that we have are the traffic issues and the, will the sewage system handle what they're wanting to build over there? And what we have a problem with here is a private road, which is supposed to be a gated community, which now has a restaurant and a store at the end of this road. We have about eight members who are trying to put together a homeowners association so we can address this issue. We don't have a problem with what they want to do across the street, we just want to make sure that the subdivision is able to handle what we're getting ready to have going on So there are a lot of issues that have to be addressed here, and the private road is a big issue of who is going to take this road over. Homeowners Association is responsible for this road. Now, we're not getting any funding when this road starts tearing up from the restaurant, from the store, or anyplace else now. Is this going to be a problem to, you know, for the homeowners to get it together and try to fix this ourselves when we have so much traffic going up and down this road as it is? How much traffic can this road actually handle is another big question. So another question that we have is it runs in and out of Livingston Parish all the way down. Being a private road, the issue that we have is speeders up and down the road. Private road, the police can't come and hand out any tickets. Who's supposed to police this area? But like I said, there are a number of issues that we have to address, and what I would like to do is to put this off. I'm the only one that received a letter that I know of, that other landowners may have received a letter on this. I had made copies and sent my letter out to the rest of the homeowners up and down the street to let them know what was getting ready to go on. We haven't had time to sit down, properly address the situation, and figure out what we're going to do about this non-gated community and a private road. So that's what we're looking at at this point in time. Now, what they have may be a good idea, but I just think we're putting the cart in front of the horse right now, and we need time to think about it, we need time to look at what's going on and how we're going to address the situation of the gated community and the private road. So I do have other issues, but I can't think of it at this moment. So, I'm not good under pressure. But I will let somebody else speak, and if I have any more, I would like to be able to stand up and add to it. That's all I say.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak on this property?
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm LJ Email, and I live on River Highlands Drive approximately a half mile before you get to this proposed project. I personally just found out about this last night, and I think most of my neighbors are in the same boat. We may have opposition to it, we may not have opposition. We just don't have enough information, we haven't had an opportunity to sit down with the folks who are trying to do this. It sounds like a good idea, but we just haven't had a chance to take a look at it. Basically, what we would ask is that it be deferred for 30 days so that we can sit down with these folks, meet with them, and we may walk in here a month from now, hand in hand, asking you to approve this project. So that's the first thing that I would request. Secondly, I think they're going to show you, they've offered some photographs of what they intend to build. If they build these things, it's great. The problem is, we don't know, or I can't think of a way to, or perhaps you can, to make what, if you decide to approve this project, if you can approve it subject to them doing what they say they're going to do today. And that's where we have a hang-up right now. I mean, if these folks come in, and they may be, I just met them earlier this afternoon, and they look like fine people, they're probably honest people, and they're probably going to try to do what they say they're going to do. But you know things happen, and if things do happen, then we, the people who have bought these lots out there, who are living there, making their homes here now, trying to keep the area a nice area, we just don't, we're scared of what might happen if these folks in charge of the project just don't do what they say they're going to do. So if there's some way that you can fashion an approval, requiring them to do what they say they're going to do in conformity with the photographs that they've got, that they've shown us, I personally have no problem with the project. If that can't be done, then again, I request a 30-day extension on this, or continuance on this, so that we can sit down with these folks and figure it out, and again, we might come in in 30 days, hand in hand, and say, hey, it's a good idea, we join them in it and wish them the best. So if you've got any questions to me, I'll be glad to try to answer them. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. First, let me go ahead and clarify, we're not approving or denying the project. This is simply, they're requesting a rezoning of the property in order to do their project. All we're looking at is the rezoning of the property right now. So we're not making a decision on their condominiums or anything. This is just the rezoning of the property.
And for the new Commissioners, you cannot condition rezoning. You can't have conditional rezoning, just to let you know. And I know that issue's been raised twice now, but you cannot condition rezoning.
Is there anyone else to speak on this piece of property?
I'm Sammy Torito, our address is 12060 River Highlands. I'm here to pretty much back up with LJ just said. We don't know anything about the project. I understand if we get it rezoned to what they want it rezoned to, that, talking to the lady at the zoning office told me that you could, in actuality, go with 20 townhomes per acre, where with it is now, you can only put one house per acre. Now, if what they show us they're going to do, like LJ said, if that's what they're going to do, it would be fine. But we don't know for sure if that's what they're going to do until we have some type of assurances from them that this is what they're going to do. And we would like to ask that y'all would wait 30 days for us to all sit down and talk about it, because I didn't know anything about this till this morning. And we tried to talk to them about waiting 30 days before we could all sit down and we could talk about it. And like LJ said, if they can make assurances to us that that's what they're going to build, then we won't have a problem with it. But, you know, I just met them, like LJ said, they seem like nice people. But, you know, we all have an investment down there, and we want to make sure that whatever they put up is going to be beneficial to the investment that we already have, that we've already made down there. So that's all I'll ask, is just wait 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Reuben Gates, I live at 12138 River Highlands Drive. I'm going to keep it short. I think I speak for 90% of my neighbors in saying that I would like you all to deny this request for zoning variance. We don't particularly want to deal with the added traffic, traffic has become a problem already. Many of my neighbors have stated that they're afraid to let their children ride their bike down the street, in fact. Also, this leaves us quite open to whatever they want. Once this is rezoned to commercial, they can put whatever they want on the land, and that scares us, as they've said before. So I'd appreciate your denial on this. Thank you.
Members of the council, my name is Patricia Bailey. I just moved into the neighborhood, my address is 12120 River Highlands Drive, and I moved from New Orleans here, and I've only been here two months, but I'd like y'all to deny the rezoning. This is a great neighborhood, they have a lot of traffic up and down the street now. If it was your neighborhood, would you want, you know, condominiums coming in, you know, more traffic? They got condominiums at the beginning of the street, they have condos at the end of the street, at the end of the street, over the canal, they have a golf cart community, they have a store, they have a bed and breakfast. The street cannot hold all this traffic. You know, we are young families, young and old, we have children, I invested a lot of money into this house. You know, I don't want it to depreciate, you know, with these condos coming up, because you get people coming in, you know, they buy condos, you know, it's not like your home. It's not like a home, they'll rent them out, you know, rentals will come in, it's just a bunch of riffraff. I'd like y'all to deny the motion for them to rezone.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this property?
I don't have a card, so I'd like to fill one out.
You can go ahead and sign the tablet right here, sir.
My name is Tommy Verges, I live at 12042 River Highlands Drive. We've lived in this, our home, it's our home, it's an investment, been out there for six and a half years now, and we've seen the degradation of the subdivision because of increased traffic due to construction projects going on in the back of the subdivision. I'm not certain what the zoning from one of these areas to another means, maybe this will be something you could point out to most of the landowners here. I just don't want it to go commercial, I'm opposed to the rezoning because of that. I'm not opposed to the project per se, again, it's not one of your issues, if they do what they say they're going to do. But we've got a lot of people with young children, we don't need additional traffic. We also have a serious maintenance problem of the road system between Livingston Parish and Ascension Parish. You have not gotten ownership of the road yet in the portion that they're speaking of. The front portion of the subdivision is under Livingston Parish. We've had to redo the road completely because of the heavy traffic back and forth through the subdivision. Any additional work that goes on in the back, that is curbed, is detrimental to what we're trying to do in what's supposed to be a residential area. And I thank you for your thoughts about not allowing the rezoning.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this property? Let me ask, is there anyone else besides this gentleman that's wishing to speak on this property? Could it kind of save time if you came up and signed in now and got it out of the way?
My name is Don Bordlon, I live at 12102 River Highlands, and I'm opposed to the rezoning of this. Basically, because from past experience, from what I can tell, condominiums usually start out as a really nice project, they're nice for about three years, and they usually end up being rental property after that. And we've got a perfect example of that in front of our subdivision. Looks like a cheap apartment complex, is what it ends up being. I've been there now, I guess, almost four years. I've seen the degradation of the neighborhood, projects going on all over the place, seems like they're filling in wetlands all over the place back up in there. And I bought into this subdivision because I liked the regulations of it, it was supposed to be single-family development, houses were supposed to be a certain size, certain pitch, roof, and now they want to change that. And that's a considerable investment I have in my home, and I'd like to have this denied, just because I don't think it's, most people would like to have a condominium complex in their neighborhood. And that's why I would like to have this thing denied. And I've got a five-year-old son, and he's one of them that I'm afraid to death to let him play in the streets. People fly down through that neighborhood 50, 60 miles an hour, and anybody that lives there will back me up on this. I mean, it's ridiculous. And people can't play in the backyards because you've got the hill down to the water, so kids end up playing in the front yards. And it's going to be a matter of time, somebody's going to get killed on that road, from the speeders coming back from the developments that they have back there with the restaurants and the bed and breakfast, and the bars down there. So, because of those reasons, I'd like to have this request denied.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Lauren Dean, and I'm probably the only person in the audience who is not a resident of River Highlands. I have known Linnell and Gary for most of my 10 years in this parish, and when they say they're going to do something, they do it. They're people of their word. And if this is denied, and something else, if they sell the land and something else, someone else purchases it, what they're looking to do is only going to increase the property value of this area. I can certainly understand the traffic issues and concerns, the speeders and whatnot. I would like for the people to think about it, in that if they don't go with this one, that is going to greatly increase their property value, they run the chance of other things showing up which could do just the opposite. Linnell and Gary are people of their word, and they will bring the property value up, because I did a tiny bit of research, not a whole lot, and I could be wrong. But if I'm not mistaken, they own one of the most valuable pieces of property in that area, and I could be wrong. They own a very valuable home, and there's no reason for them to try to degrade their own home value. So I would hope that you all would reconsider, excuse me, or consider making this change to benefit the area. Thank you.
I am Roger Williams, I live at 11888 River Highlands Drive. I am for the project, for one reason. We have options, and we've tried to, I've tried to explain to some of the other homeowners regarding where the actual zoning is now compared to where we're trying to take the zoning. In some of the zoning, which I'm sure all y'all know the difference between the two, I mean, you can even create the land right now as a farmland, okay? That's not an interest in where we're actually wanting the land to go. We're just trying to increase the value of the property, and to even, I don't know if y'all, I don't know if y'all got the pictures of what was interested in it being back there, but even if we stay where the zoning is and we actually built the actual house back there, you can still put 24 houses on that plot of property. So as far as can the property or the area still handle it or not, well, if we only put, we're looking as far as 24 to 32 condos would be mostly what it would be. Even if you put a house and it's basically approved per acre, because there's 22 acres there to do so, I could be not fully accurate, but even if so, there's not going to be a large difference in the volume of traffic that will be going down the road. Also, if you have homes there, it's also going to, more or less, if the houses are bigger, it's also going to increase the volume of cars that will be to those houses compared to a two or three-bedroom condominium, or whatever you want to call it. Basically, maximum, even if you did 30, there's only going to be 60 cars that come down that road. They're approved all through the core and so forth and coastal management, that there's a canal that can go through that property, it's been done for years and years, it's already been approved. There's already a marina there, and if there's a marina, which is going to be attached, or actually, a waterway will be attached to the back of these condominiums, that they're owned, they're 30-foot wide, they have their own individual two boat slips that they own theirself, and in that event, if this is not done, if you actually put a canalway through there and they put a marina that will create about 150 to 175 boat slips, in a marina scenario and a big parking lot, you're going to create 300 cars down that way, and that's one of the reasons why I feel definitely that you can shut that portion of it down, which will shut down a minimum of, you know, it could be 60 to 70 cars with some visitors coming through the condominiums. But also, if you look at it, if there is a large parking area and actually where there could be a marina there, I mean, it's going to quadruple, or if not more, so which, I think it's a great investment, it's a great plan for our neighborhood. I have one of the largest homes out there, and I'm definitely for it. And I live at 11888 River Highlands Drive. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, is there anyone else?
Thank you very much. My name is Russell Johnson, and I live at 11400 River Highlands Drive. I think that for most of the neighbors, what you've heard today is a common message. I live directly across from where the proposed project, or part of the project, and I got a good opportunity to talk to Roger tonight, was very happy to hear some of the things that he had to say. But as I think you've heard from many of my neighbors, what I really would ask the council to do is to delay this for 30 days and allow the neighborhood as a whole to really understand what the project is. In my case, by zoning commission by law, well, by laws protocol, I should have received a notice. I didn't, I didn't see that notice. My next-door neighbor did not receive that notice. Some of the neighbors here are not in a direct contact to the property aspect, but I am. And so from that perspective, you know, I would propose 30 days, let us look at what's being proposed, and then I could take a position. Right now, I don't have enough information to take a position on this one way or another. I do have concerns, and that would be my request, is a 30-day delay.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else miss you? Go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and ma'am, if you want to come back up?
Let me introduce myself. My name is Gary Nugent. A lot of you guys, I haven't got to meet, I'm sorry about that. The reason, I'd like to explain myself a little bit about the property, because I haven't got to address everybody, all my neighbors. I do live here, and the main reason I bought the property is because it was so undecided of what was going to happen to the property. I mean, I am concerned about things that happen in our neighborhood, I want to do nothing but approve it. We got six kids ourselves, you know? I have the same concerns and everything that you do. But the options that were on the table a few years ago about this piece of property were anything from a campground to a parking lot to a boat landing to a marina, you know? I didn't like the idea of that kind of thing, so kind of quiet-like, I bought the property to sit on it for a little while and do something with it later down the road. We haven't told a few people about it, what we were planning on doing with it, but like, I don't think everybody understands, we're just trying to take it out of the conservation area tonight. I don't think people realize that there's still other steps and things you have to go through to do any kind of building and construction and that sort of thing. But before we can go further with any kind of building or plans or anything of that matter, we have to get out of the conservation area. So I mean, I didn't really want to go spend a whole bunch of money on engineering and things like that, you know, if it wasn't a conservation area. That's why we're trying to change it today. So, I mean, we're looking out for the best interests of the neighborhood, this is about the best thing that we thought we could do with it without making a big trailer parking lot, or, you know, boat storage, or park, you know, whatever. We thought this would be the nicest thing, which it would be good if some people could see it, because I don't think everybody's seen it.
Ma'am?
I'm going to butt in here a minute, I'm his wife, if you don't mind. I kind of want to throw a few things at you to let you know who I am. Number one, I'm not a developer. Number two, I'm not a contractor. I am an individual that does live in this neighborhood. I do have a nice home in this neighborhood, equally as nice as the rest of the other homes in this neighborhood. It seems to be the general consensus that by doing this project, it's going to decrease somebody's property value, it's going to cause them grief with traffic and those other issues. I will let you know, traffic is an issue on our road. Our road is approximately three and a half miles long. I have a scan here, I don't know if you're familiar with the area, if you have the full plat, does he have the full plat layout? I'll walk you through it, if you don't mind, I know you have plenty to do tonight, but this is, if you look at the end of the plat that you're looking at, if you see track two, I'm sorry, Y2A1, that is actually a marina now, that houses 100 or so boats, 75 to 100 boats. If you look at track Z1A1B, that is zone commercial with a restaurant and a store and a fuel dock in that one area. Y1A1A1 is also zone commercial. I do understand the concern for the tra-
understand their concern for the traffic in this area. I live there. I actually live over the, at the bridge that crosses from Livingston to Ascension, and I can more often than not count the vehicles that fly over that curb, and fly over the bridge. That's not an issue I have any control over, and it's nothing I can do anything about. I don't feel that this project is going to create a bigger problem. If I were to construct this property as it is now in a conservation area, I can put 20 houses there. If I do what I intend to do, and what my intentions are to do, I'm going to put 24 condos there. Statistically, there are more vehicles and living bodies in a four bedroom house than there are on a three bedroom condo. Equally the same with their vehicles. I do not feel that asking what I am going to do, or intend to do, or would like to do, is going to create any more traffic havoc on these, on these people, including myself, in this subdivision. I do have children. I have six. They range from 17 to 10. I have nieces and nephews that run from eight to a year old. I understand their concern. I will be the first to stand up in a neighborhood and say, we need to do something about it. I'm on the neighborhood, our homeowners association in my filing. I got the condo association filing at the beginning of the subdivision straight, and didn't even live there. I had an apartment, a condo, that we just went to on the weekends. I am all for improving a neighborhood. I am all for keeping property values up. I would suffer as much, if not more, than anybody in this neighborhood if this did not work. Number one, I would lose on the project. It's not the only property I own in the subdivision, and I would lose on my home as well. I would not do anything to anybody in that neighborhood that would cause them grief, because it would in turn turn on my back. There's a question as to gated community. That's been a longstanding question since this has been done. There's been some legal issues between the previous developers and such. I can't answer those questions. That may be something you want to look to, look about, look into. I don't know. If you don't mind, if he could turn, are y'all familiar with this area on the water? Any of you? Are you interested in being familiarized with it? If you are, I'd gladly take a real quick minute and show it to you. If you're not, that's okay. Like I said, there are existing condos there. There are 22, 20? There's 20 condos there. There's double family, the one on top, one on bottom, at the end of the property. What we propose to do is on a much higher scale, it's the price of these condos is going to be probably about twice of what those originally priced for, at the end of the street and beginning. They are going to be what I would consider an exclusive, high grade product for our neighborhood. If it goes through, that's fine. But I'd like to show y'all what we plan on doing, so you can get a vision as to what I'm being opposed for, if you choose to look at it. If you don't, that's okay. I know it's just a zoning issue, but this seems to be the neighborhood issue. One of the other things I want to let you know is that, there was a question as to the letters that went out. The letters that went out went to the adjacent property owners. I will tell you that 95% of the people in this room today opposing what I'm doing don't live in Ascension Parish. They live on River Highlands Drive in Livingston Parish. They're not adjacent owners. This particular piece of property is not going to affect them to the great magnitude in which they think it will, by any means. So to answer that question, yes, your letters did go out to the appropriate people. They did get their appropriate time to think over it and look over it. It's just in the matter in which they were dispersed to the others and the rest of the neighborhood that was so shocked.
Ask the audience, please, keep the comments to themselves right now. The public comment period is over.
But like again, that's what I'm here to say. I mean, if it goes through, it goes through. If it doesn't, it doesn't. I appreciate all of your time and your effort in looking over this, and I'm not here to make my neighbors upset, but thank y'all.
If you would like to go ahead and submit those pictures, now would be the time.
Y'all, y'all are willing to see them? Okay.
Well, she can, you can put them on overhead. We can all see them at once.
Y'all have the overhead on?
It's a pretty fancy deal. Lot of money.
Hold on a minute.
Lance, while she's doing that, can I ask you a question? Mike, the lots that we see on the, on the plat, Lance, 81 through 110, those lots across the street, is that Ascension Parish or Livingston?
That's Ascension.
That's Ascension Parish.
So those are the adjacent landowners?
Yes, sir.
And did those folks get a mailing?
I can tell you-
Lance, please.
The letters that were sent out was submitted through the developer, and we sent those letters out. Now, I do not have a copy of the letters that were sent out to see which ones were returned, to see which ones were received, so. Yeah, Ms. June also, and I don't know, you know, also, how long these people have owned their homes, so they go by the tax roll. So if it's been within a year or so, it may not show that person's name on there.
I can't tell you across the street from this, you have it?
I talked to one of the neighbors, and the tax roll that we go by, they listed on the developer, I mean, yeah, the, the developer that just sold to them like within six or seven months ago, so. But we do have a list of all these lots.
And it's a very limited number that actually own, correct?
Well, yeah, they still showing that, the people that owned it before.
Yeah.
And that's the only list that we can go by with the tax.
Is that the list that was, that got mailed a letter?
Mm-hmm.
We don't know who received. We just know what was sent.
Yeah.
Can I see that?
The requirement is that they send to those who are on the tax rolls for the last published tax rolls.
So we should fall within those guidelines, if I'm not mistaken. And I'm not trying to get anything over anybody, by any means. But if you want to look at this real quick, I kind of show you, give you an idea of what's going on. These are the condos that, and we've called them condos. There seems to be a question as to whether condos, townhouses, what have you, but regardless, it needs to be in the zoning area to get it done. Where, these are them. They're very appealing. They have a lot of brick. They're not all siding like some of the other condominiums in our area, which seem to create such a hardship for most of those in this room. They are a single family. They're merely attached in the back. Give you another view. Kind of give you what you're looking at. From the front, you won't really be able to tell that they're not individual homes, or individual townhouses, or however you refer to it. They are, they are of a higher grade scale. They have courtyards and such between them, like you can see here. This gives you another view through the back. They're mostly brick. This is the back view. We're planning, we intend on changing this a little bit, being the boat view will be behind it. Few little different things, double French doors, things of that nature. This will kind of give you a scope of what the living area looks like. It's kind of a fuzzy picture. They will have the nicer crown moldings, the nicer floors, granite countertops, things of that nature, to keep the value of them up. So that they will fall in the guidelines in which the rest of the neighborhood is in. There's one thing I do want to let you know, as I mentioned before, and just reiterate, this piece of property is not part of any subdivision restrictions, homeowners, associations, or regulations. Therefore, it is pretty much an open piece of property to be governed by the existing owner, at the current zoning laws. And the reason, again, as my husband said, we live here. We have no intentions of diminishing what I have greatly vested in. Do y'all have any questions? I'm sorry, I'm so long-winded.
Okay. Comments, questions from the commissioners?
I have a question for Lance. Lance, looking at the adjoining properties here, can you go through quickly and tell us what the current zoning is on, like, track Z1A1, Y2A1, Y1A1A1, Y1A1B? Are all of those conservation? Yes, sir, that's correct. All of them are conservation. Okay. Is there any, is there any commercial in this area? Yes, sir. There's commercial on the last two, Y1A1A1, and Z1A1B. And there's a marina, that's Y2A1 by wagons back. There's a marina there. But those other ones have a commercial use on them. But they're actually zoned? Conservation. Conservation. Yes, sir.
But the property surrounding this particular property, Lance, immediately surrounding this property, that's all conservation, correct?
Yeah.
And Lance, one other question. Photographs I saw looked to me like townhouses. Those have to be in conserva, in crossroad commercial?
Yes, sir. Yes. The difference between townhomes and condos is land, you know. One has property, the other one has a common, condos have common area. And the townhouses actually have property along with the, the building. So that's the difference.
The reason we've asked for it to be considered a condominium, there is going to be a bulkhead on the back piece of this property, that runs the length of the canal that will go behind these condominiums as such. And for that to be maintained appropriately, to appease everyone, for it to be in the condominium regime, would be the best way to handle that. It would leave the, the maintenance issue amongst everyone there, instead of on an individual basis. If you have two people that live side by side, and point A's bulkhead falls down and knocks point B's bulkhead down, A and B are going to get in a fight. It's going to be a legal issue. By going this route, from previous experience with living in the condos at the front of the street and things of that nature, we found that this would work the best and keep the owners in that environment on an equal basis.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
This would have to be rezoned, or split up into individual lots?
Well, no, all, right now, all we're looking at is the rezoning of the property as it is in its entirety.
And that's in one lot?
Yeah.
So all they can, they gotta go all the way through here for one lot, unless they subdivide it up.
Well, because you got a crossroads commercial on that, you got a minimum lot size, and you got the maximum square footage, is 20,000 square feet, if it's one lot. So that'd have to come back in and subdivide it up to go any bigger. I may be wrong, but that's what I'm reading.
Let me ask you a question. If it's zone crossroad commercial, and you do a multifamily residential area, you can have up to, let's see, the lot size is one acre, 20 units per acre. Am I reading that correct? I have 20 acres, and obviously, I don't intend on putting 400 condos in that area. But according to what this reads, I could put that many per acre. So do, is my property divided by that acreage, or is it divided by lots to determine what you can and cannot put there? If it's one tract of land, and it's 20 acres, if I read that correctly, I could put 400 condos there. Obviously, again, I'm not going to do that, but that's the way I would interpret the math, would it require a subdivision of the property.
Let me, let me go back to my question about condo and townhouses. I understand what you're saying about common maintenance of the bulkhead, and how essential it is.
And the grounds.
That makes all sense in the world.
And the grounds.
But you know, you could, you could conceivably, in your declaration of covenants and restrictions, and in your, by creating an easement for that canal, across the lots and what have you, you could pretty much accomplish the same goal.
You are, you are correct, but in my previous history dealing with things of that nature, it doesn't always work out that way. There's seen, when there's a stipulation in a condo regime, if you want to use it that way, or covenants in the neighborhood, there's always a question as to who is, who actually is going to be responsible for what percentage. When you're dealing with townhouses, and you actually own the land that's underneath you, you own the land that's behind you in front of you as well. Well, there becomes an issue with your neighbor when they're pretty much touching you, if they can cross over your property or not. And in the past history, I just don't think that that's the avenue to keep that area friendly with each other. Maybe that's the word I'm looking for. Friendly.
Lance, you may have said this before. I just want to make sure I do understand. Did you say there was a tract in this area that is zone commercial, or it's all commercial? It's non-conforming uses?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's all-
Well, I mean, if there's, if there's no property zone commercial, it's all conservation, even with non-conforming uses, if we, if we go and we rezon this property from conservation to crossroads commercial, it's spot zoning. And we don't do that.
That would make sense. We were under the impression that the, the property at the end of the street, when this was presented, that that piece of property, where is she at? There you are. Did you do the zoning on that end of the street for him?
Well, irregardless, I mean, we've got individuals that have had businesses here, they've had things here before zoning came into effect.
This actually did go into place before that.
So they're grandfathered in. It's a non-conforming use.
That's what she's just told me.
So, I mean, no matter what, we're looking at a spot zoning issue.
I mean, I'll say this. I think what you've presented as a proposed project has a great deal of merit, and looks very nice.
Thank you.
But I think the issue of taking it to a commercial zoning, it's where it gets a little tough. You know, and I, and I think that if you can find a way to do it within a residential zoning district.
Okay, that's fine.
Just like Mike Chairman had said, you know, we typically don't spot zone. I am curious, have you, just out of, out of curiosity, have you heard of a PUD?
A PUD?
Yes.
Is that a trick question? No, I'm just kidding. No, I haven't.
I mean, this, based on what I've heard tonight, a lot of residents have gotten up and made comment to the fact that there were no guarantees. They didn't know what was happening. A lot of them said they may support it, they may not.
Mm-hmm.
With a PUD, you get that opportunity. A total rezoning doesn't occur. Everything's planned within it. It's a rezoning and, and a development all in one.
Mm-hmm.
So that's something, I'm, I'm curious as to, you know, we just put, you know, with PUD and PUD, but we just put those ordinances into effect, and a lot of people don't realize that that is an alternative to-
I didn't know that was an alternative. And honestly, in all actuality, I did not realize that the property at the end of the street was not zone commercial as we were told it was. If, we were told it was zone commercial, not conservation with a, you know, non-conforming use. I was quite misled on that, and I apologize for that. I guess, is this a new ordinance that y'all just put into place, this PUD issue? Okay. I'll look into that, that avenue and see what you do.
That was just my curiosity as to how, how much that's getting out there.
It's not.
It's not. You know, it's unconventional zoning, but it's, it's something that allows every, everyone, it's win-win situations for everyone, including people that do not have an idea of what's going in. If, if we blanket rezon, there's no, there's no guarantees that what happens within that rezoning.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if you were to sell it to anybody, anything can go within that zoning district.
Right.
That's in the tables.
Okay.
PUDs are an alternative to that.
Okay.
If I may, I, I'm going to ask staff to staff, if we, if we were to postpone it, that would give you ample time to maybe, give her ample time to visit with the neighbors and maybe review other alternatives that you may have, and come back next month with something?
Yeah. Yes, sir. What you don't want to do is basically make some kind of decision at this point, if that's what her plan is, because it doesn't, if she petitions and whatever the decision is, she can't come back for another year with this request. It doesn't matter if it's a rezoning request, it's an amendment, and amendment would also be that PUD.
PUD would fall into that.
Yes.
I would, on that basis, I'm going to recommend postponement, you know, for 30 days.
He's good with the postponement. Will postpone it till next month?
You want to defer it until next month?
Defer it to next month, and give her an opportunity to revisit what other alternatives she has through the zoning ordinance, and also visit with the neighbors.
I have a motion to defer until next month by Julio Dumas.
I second that.
Wait, wait, staff?
I guess one thing is, is that you want her to come back. If she comes back, just with some type of decision, what she's going to do? Because she's not, I mean, she's not going to really have enough time for her to submit everything she needs to for the next meeting for the PUD or SPUD or whatever. everything she needs to for the next meeting for the PUD or SUD or whatever that she wants to do.
Obviously, I mean, she wouldn't be able to do that, but she, if, if it was decided that she wanted to do something other than go forward with this, she could pull it.
Okay.
Yeah, basically what it's gonna do is give, it's gonna give these individuals the opportunity to get with you, find out what their options are, they can talk with the, with the neighbors, and at that point, they can decide whether they wanna come back before this next month or they want, wanna pull it.
Yeah.
So I have a motion to defer till next month by Julio Dumas, with a second by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 5B, zoning review ID 1531.06 for James R. Smiley Jr. et al. And it's to amend the, uh, parish zoning map from conservation to medium intensity residential.
Ellen Jackson again, rezoning from conservation to medium intensity residential.
Ms. Jackson, would you hold on just a minute so we can see if we can get those doors closed in the back?
There you go. You saw the demonstration?
I know Ozzy's coming out to get me, man.
I liked this.
All right, Ms. Jackson.
If this, it, if this is approved, um, it would bring in a water line that would service the, um, the Darrow era, area. And there are no plans right now for what they're planning on doing, they're just trying to get it rezoned to see, for that zoning criteria.
I just wanna make sure I understand what you said. It's gonna take us rezoning this to get a water line in the Darrow?
No, it doesn't, it's not gonna take it, but that will, that's one of the nice aspects of it, it will. We're just trying to do a residential, medium residential, um, development. But that is the highlight of it.
Commissioners have any questions or comments at this time? We'll go ahead and open it up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come up and sign in.
My name is Carmen Madeira. I'm a lifelong resident of this area. She talks about water. Right now, we have water. A lot of times, we don't have enough pressure in our houses to run two faucets at the same time. Uh, secondly, you're talking about you can't spot zone, that's exactly what you'd be doing if you changed this. So I'm totally against the rezoning.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Lee Waginsback. I own the property directly northwest of that property, but right up to the property. I lived there four years, prior to that, I lived there, uh, twenty-something years before I left Darrow. So, the concern I have is the area cannot sustain that many houses being built, 'cause I know this is what's the issue. It's gonna be a subdivision. We know it, we heard it, we had, uh, close contacts to it. The concern I have is the, uh, water, not the, uh, potable water, public water system, but the water, rainwater. I had to purchase flood insurance probably three and a half years ago due to water almost coming into my house. Since then, the parish has redone the ditches, but the last rain we had, we still had a considerable amount of water in my area. And my concern is any kinda more surface area that is covered in that area, it would stop and cut the dacquille on the drainage in that area. You only have one little canal that drains probably all of Darrow, and that's a big concern. Been between, uh, Drainage Commission several times, and personally, we had issues with it and we had to, uh, take it into our own hands. Uh, this is the reason why I would like to see this, uh, change into conservation be denied.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Ms. Jackson, could you speak into the microphone, please?
Was it Troy, I think it's Troy? Someone signed this paper. It's either Troy or Tony, it looks like. Oh, is that him? Okay, that's him, never mind. The next one would be, uh, Bristol Plasis.
My name's Bristol Plasis, I live in, uh, 3283 Bristol Plasis Road. Uh, the reason I don't wanna see this land, uh, changed is because when, when it was zoned, we zoned it conservation to keep a bunch of houses from coming in. And, uh, I don't, personally, I don't want any houses, but they wanna sell their land, so they can do, they can sell it, but I just don't want, I want the least amount of houses put on as possible. That's all I have to say, thank you.
John?
Okay, my name's John Robert. Uh, my, uh, my wife and her, uh, four brothers and sisters, uh, own the adjoining property to this subject property, and, uh, we're rep, just representing them, they're all opposed to this rezoning of the property. Um, my father-in-law runs a full-time cattle operation on that property. We also know that, uh, we're downriver from this particular property, and we also know of, uh, some property that was sold just south of, uh, downriver of our property that they're gonna wanna put a development on, and we don't wanna have a, be sandwiched in between two high-density developments. If this is approved, the other one would likely be, uh, rezoned too. And, uh, so we're, uh, definitely opposed to this. Darrow's a rural community, uh, and we'd like to keep it that way.
Hi, my name is Trudy Burnett. I live at 38073 Highway 22, right by this property that they wanna divide into a subdivision. You've heard about the water problems. It's really bad when you have to decide whether you're gonna flush the toilet or get a glass of water, 'cause you can't do both at the same time. Um, I have no problem with these people building a subdivision, but three houses per acre is kind of a lot. I raised four children here, I've been living where I am for over 20 years, and, um, it's not many kids that can say they grew up around cattle. My children would have friends come over and they were impressed, 'cause we had cattle in the backyard. Um, I would like for you to, to deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty?
Hi, my name's Patty Boudreau. I live at 38093 Highway 22 in Darrow. I've lived there all my life. I was lucky enough to get the piece of property I used to play on as a little kid, my grandpa gave it to me to live on. Um, years ago, y'all decided y'all were gonna zone. Zoning came in, we had to pick a zoning, no matter which one we want, it didn't matter what we wanted, if we wanted it or not, it was gonna be zoned for us to make a choice. We made a choice. But guess what? Y'all came back and told us, couldn't do that. Couldn't be zoned that way, it had to be zoned some other kinda way. So we went back and we picked another zoning, couldn't do that one either, till finally, we went with conservation, because at least that way we could keep our horses and our cows and our land, and we didn't have to worry about the subdivisions. Now, I understand they wanna sell the land, and if they wanna sell the land, that's fine. But please, don't make it three houses per acre. We've all lived there, we all love it where we're at, our children love it, they have their horses, their cows, and please don't take that away from them. On top of all this, talk about the water, the flooding. I've lived there all my life, it's only the past five years that all of a sudden I have acreage on my property that floods. Because of the way they're flooding, I mean, the, the way they're rerouting all the routes or whatever, they came in, well, they're gonna dig drainage ditches, well, they dig the drainage ditches, but they don't keep them up. Well, when they come back, because that's flooding, that stopped up, well, they can't do that either, because it's lowlands. Well, it wasn't lowlands five years ago when y'all came in and dug it out, but it is now, because they have palmettos or whatever growing on it. Well, because they can't dig there, they have to reroute it somewhere else, which comes on the back of my property, which should be going the other way. Because I don't know about y'all, but I've never seen water flow uphill, unless they dig a bigger ditch. Well, it's kinda like the lady told y'all earlier, what had started out as a ditch like this is now like this, because they're trying to make water flow uphill. If we come in with that, if y'all come in with that, uh, if they come in with the subdivision, we just think we're starting with problems now. It's gonna be a whole lot worse then. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
John Landash?
Good evening, my name is John Landash. I live directly across the street from what's gonna be taking place. Trying to follow in Lee's footsteps on what's gonna be happening about the water situation. The water from the property that's gonna be proposed for zoning is draining directly behind our house. It goes on the side of Lee Waginsback's house, goes across 22 and directly behind my house. Contacting DPW to have it dug out, cleaned out or whatever, they only must have dug about maybe two football fields worth. So what they did is they said they fixed the problem, they divided it. They got one half gone one way, they got another half gone in another direction. Water flows one way. When the water gets above a foot or two or three, depending on the amount of rain that we receive, it goes one way, the way it's supposed to go. Whatever they wanna do with this property, that's fine, just don't build like they state they're gonna build. We're gonna be in more problems than what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Troy?
My name is Boyce Matar. I live on Highway 22, lived there just about all my life. I ask you to do one thing. You think, y'all say you're looking to the future. No food, no, no farms, no food, that's where it stops. Keep this conservation, please. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's all? Okay. Questions, comments from the commission?
Lance, uh, looking above this property, um, there looks to be a nice sized subdivision. Is that, does that predate, uh, is that conservation as well, it just happened before zoning? I'm looking at this, uh, up here. Yeah, sir, that's the community of Darrow, so yes, sir, that's been, been there for a while, yes, sir.
Lance, I've got a question for you, it pertains to a comment that was made. Um, when we revised the zoning map last time, were requests received to maintain zoning conservation or to make zoning conservation in this area? I know you...
I don't, there was some concern, yes, sir, that they wanted it to stay that way. When we had the meetings in those areas, uh, they stated that, yes, sir.
So, this was, this was, the commission at that time felt that it was, it needed to be conservation, because that's what the residents in the area felt it should be.
Yes, sir, they were vocal about it, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'm just gonna, um, interject to, trying to orient myself here, Highway 22 goes in such a strange way, but 22 towards 44, when you get close to 44...
It's down the river.
But when you go away from the river and you get to 44, it's probably one of the fast, you know, second fastest residential growing areas of Ascension Parish, and it is gonna continue to change.
Well, considering that you have two state highways intersecting right there, yeah. But I mean, once you get out, you go down toward 22, out toward there, I mean, yeah, it does start opening up, too. You still got the farmland, you know, like everybody's talking about.
That, that's correct, but on the opposite end of 22, that's another very large residential development that we just approved in a very similar situation, completely surrounded with farmland. And frankly, I'd much rather see the lower density that this would bring rather than the higher density. Take 22, cross 44, and keep going, and keep going towards the interstate.
We didn't rezon anything.
Orange Grove, we sure did, we recommended rezoning.
That, that wasn't conventional zoning.
But that's a zoning district now under the code, so it went from conservation to a PUD zoning district.
I don't, I don't view that as something.
No, I, I know, but you know, I'm saying is to say, um, the PUD ordinance, the only difference is, is that you get the benefits, on one side, you get the benefits of the control, on the flip side of it, you give away the density.
You, you get planning.
You get planning, but you get, but you give away the density. Versus a standard subdivision, which have a lower density, the density regulated by And that's what you give away in trade.
Are there any other comments or questions from the commission? What's the wish of the commission?
Based on the fact that this is spot zoning and, um, along with, coupled with the residents and their wishes, um, I'm gonna move that we, um, recommend to the council that we deny this rezoning.
I have a motion to deny by Mike Bardwell.
A second.
Second by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I vote against that.
I have one, uh, vote to oppose by Julio Dumas. Motion passes. Item 5C, zoning review ID 1532.06, tract A-1-B of the Jack H. McDowell property for Sunrise Business Ventures LLC.
Uh, I'm Boyd Holmes, uh, representing Sunrise Business Ventures. We would like to, this, this piece of property is on Duplessis Road, uh, I guess it's west of Airline Highway. Along Airline Highway, all the, the property is zone mixed-use, and we are asking to expand that zoning to include tract A1B, which abuts the mixed-use zone where the railroad track is. The owner would like to place a 4,000-square-foot office and warehouse and in a, a 3,000-square-foot storage building. The property has been, for the past number of years, it had, um... The property has been, for the past number of years, it had old trailers on it and was kinda grown up. They've recently cleaned it up, hauled off the trailers, and it's just an open pasture right now.
Comments or questions from Mr. Holmes?
Is that, Mr. Holmes, is that across the street, just before you get to the railroad tracks, across the street from like a turquoise abandoned eyesore?
That green store, alright, an old store.
Yeah.
There's a truck stop right there.
And the truck stop was, well, the truck stop was on the corner of Airline and DuPlessis. And then across railroad track on the left-hand side, there was that green building.
It's not the piece of property that had all the nice big oak trees on it that got cleared off too, huh?
They had oak trees? I don't think so.
No.
Let me, hold on, let me look at my area.
No, that's on 621. That's the corner of 621 Airline.
There's another one that was further down around there.
Isn't that this one?
On the, it was on the left-hand side, same side of the road as this.
Left-hand side coming from...
Oh, it was, it was in the area where this piece of property is located.
Okay. I'm looking at an aerial, and the front portion was with the trailers, and it was an open area in the very back part. Close to the railroad track has been wooded.
Not a heavy equipment rental place right next to it or...
That's on the Airline Highway side. You wanna get the...
That's right, your back off of it, your by the railroad tracks. That's what I'm thinking of.
See, this is Airline Highway?
Yeah.
And then this is the piece of property. Trees are in the back part.
Yep. Insignificant trees, my head. I used to live down the road from that place, so it was, it's just scrub, hackberry, tallow tree, insignificant tree.
Okay, well, if you have one, no one has any questions for Mr. Holmes, then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this property, please come up and sign in.
Jimmy?
Hi, my name is Jimmy Delone, and I live approximately two houses down from the stated property. Our concern is, is, yeah, there were the utility trailers, and they were quite undesirable, you know, right down from my house. What does this open up our home to, our property value? What concerns me is there's already the huge subdivision almost directly across the street from my home. What, what does this, what does this pose to us? Like I said, I know from the earlier cases, we're not here to debate what's gonna be built there. You can't guarantee me what's gonna be built there, but it's just a concern to us as homeowners is what's gonna be right next to our house. You know, I've got children, that kinda concerns me a bit, is, you know, what's gonna be there? And mixed use, I'm not real educated on what, what the zones mean. Medium residential, I don't even know if trailers should be on medium residential, but mixed use, what exactly does that mean? And what does that allow the owner to do on this property right next to our homes? I'm not necessarily in objection to, to developing that area, because it is, the turquoise building is not something I use as a landmark to, to get to my house. You know, I live two houses down from the turquoise building that's falling down with the guy selling crack on the other side. So, you know, it's not, we wanna do everything we can do for our little area to kinda look decent. And, you know, we don't have 50 people here in objection, but it is important to us as homeowners. And I'd just like to know what's gonna be, what's gonna happen with this property, and like I said, what's gonna be allowed to when it is, when and if it is changed to mixed usage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Wilcox?
Hi, yes, my name is Dan Wilcox. I'm a new resident of Ascension Parish. As of January 20th, moved here from St. John Parish after a resident there of seven years. I live in Silverstone Estate subdivision, which is directly behind the proposed property for rezoning. My property is one of the largest lots, or actually probably is assessed as the largest lot in the Silverstone subdivision. Basically, what we have between our home and the proposed property for rezoning is railroad tracks that are being utilized by, I think it's Kansas City Line Railroad, as well as Amtrak and other commercial lines. My concern, actually, I just found out about this by seeing the sign posted on the lot. As a prop, an adjacent property owner, I was not given any written notice of what the proposed new owner of this property had planned. My concern right now, with just hearing what's going on, is if, if you are gonna possibly rezone it to a, a commercial business, obviously, if they're gonna have some type of storage facility there, they may have some large trucks going in and out, possibly some 18-wheelers, some tractor trailers. That is, that property is actually right next to the railroad tracks. So that would mean that you would have 18-wheelers pulling out directly onto DuPlessi Road, which services Silverstone and services also as a route to Tiggy DuPlessi. You have, the trains are actually traveling sometimes at speeds of 60 or 70 miles per hour. So if you're proposing to put a commercial business there with possibly the, the means of having tractor trailers going in and out of there, you could be looking at a potentially fatal accident looking you in the face as far as if, you know, what type of business is this gonna be? What are they gonna be carrying? Are they gonna be carrying pesticides? Are they gonna be carrying aluminum or steel? In any case, what, just from what I've seen with the, with the trains passing five times a day at 60 and 70 miles per hour, you know, you're looking for possibly a, a, a serious accident happening if you don't even, if, I mean, you couldn't really improve the rail, the rail crossing there. It's fairly adequate, I would imagine. But with a commercial business, having trucks going in and out of that particular property, you could be looking at, you know, a potential of having a derailment there, having a serious accident, and having to evacuate that whole area. So, you know, I am, I kinda back up what the other gentleman said as well. We don't really know what this property is being proposed to do, what, what their plans are. I myself, as a resident of Silverstone subdivision, they have a homeowners association of which I've never been contacted by, but at this time, I would like to immediately appoint myself as the representative for Silverstone subdivision and possibly organize a petition against this particular type of rezoning. So I would move to defer it until the homeowners of Silverstone would be properly notified and given a better chance on possibly petitioning the committee on declining the action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sonya?
Good evening. I'm Sonya Mallett, and I live at 38420 DuPlessis Road. Had no intention of coming up here and speaking whatsoever, but part of the, the problem that I see here is, this is an area that is being developed across the street at the Babbin airstrip. They are now currently developing that into a 232 lot subdivision, which is directly across the street from where I live. And this is just, I believe, five or six houses down that they're planning this particular development. DuPlessis Road can't handle what we currently have in the way of, of traffic, much less have some type of business at this particular part of the road. And it absolutely was an eyesore when we had all the trailers there. It, the turquoise building is atrocious. That is something that needs to be removed. There's a tremendous amount of vandalism that goes on, on our street because of the transients that come along. It has gotten, you would think it would get better with the more residential that's coming in. For some reason, it seems to actually be getting worse. But I see a movement of it becoming a better residential area. To take in place a business right there at that particular part of the railroad track is crazy. It's not going to bring anything to, to the area that is becoming more residential. It just seems incongruent with the way in which the parish has been moving, which is taking away the businesses and bringing in more residential. So it, it almost would be going backwards. So I would ask that you please, I am all for development. I am all for things that better a community. I don't know that a business at this particular location is to better the community. It's residential. It's moving toward more residential. This is a business. And I just asked the gentleman, could he tell me what type of business? Were they looking at bringing in 18-wheelers? What was it? He couldn't even tell me that. He has no idea what kind of business it is that's gonna be moving in there. Has no idea what they're gonna do with the storage facilities. So I would ask that you please reject it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Marvin?
Hi, my name is Marvin Harrison. My address is 38462 DuPlessis Road. That's actually right next door to, to the property that they're wanting to put the warehouses on. My concern, basically, I just wanna back up every, what everyone else has said, and my concern is the traffic and, and the noise. I just asked the guy, like she said, what, what, what kind of noise, what actually they're gonna, they're gonna be storing over there in the warehouses, and he couldn't give me an answer. So I just need more information about it before I can say that I agree with it. So I asked to actually oppose, oppose all of them.
Thank you. No one else?
Okay, the reason that the residents of Silverstone weren't notified because there's a tract A1A that, that we actually abut, and that's, so that's the reason. Now, the buildings, the office warehouse, which is gonna be an office connected with a warehouse in the back, is a 4,000 square foot building, and then the stand-alone building warehouse is gonna be 3,000 square feet, which really aren't very big buildings. So I don't know if they're gonna have 18-wheelers coming in, but from the size of those buildings, it doesn't seem like it's gonna be, you know, a big truck dock type facility that you have tractor trailers coming through. But I don't know for sure, so I can't answer that question. Other than that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Comments, questions from commissioners?
Boyd, do you guys own A1A?
No, I think that A1A has been sold.
Okay. Do you, do you know any intention there, just out of curiosity? Any intention for the other property owner there?
No, I have no idea.
Okay. I was just thinking that'd be a nice setup for a buffer. Some people mentioned not seeing your building or eyesore or whatever.
Well, and that's, that's, you know, it will buffer Silverstone because there's nothing, and it's not gonna be rezoned, so it's still gonna stay, I guess, RM.
Lance? Refresh my memory. Aren't we trying to keep commercial all along Airline Highway and use the railroad track as a, a boundary line?
Yes, sir. There is a boundary there, which is the railroad track at this time, and intention is to, to keep it as that, at that, at this time, at this point. As the airline goes away or the railroad goes away, then, you know, it doesn't follow it. But on that area, in that area, it does. Actually, the boundary is the railroad track. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Lance, for quick, this actually came before the commission at one time.
Yes, sir, it did. I think is, if my memory is correct on the dates, it's probably one of the first ones we had with the date of it, because it came into effect of June 1st of 99. And I think it was June of 99 when that request originally came. So, but yes, sir, it did, and the recommendation at that time was to deny, along with the council going ahead with that recommendation. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna take a stab at this and say that I don't see any change in circumstances where the, where the railroad, you know, doesn't continue to serve as a reasonable buffer for the commercial zoning from the adjoining residential. So I'm gonna move for denial on that basis.
I have a motion to deny by Julio Dumas.
Recommend denial, excuse me.
Still, it's a motion. It always goes, it's gonna go, it's a recommendation, but it's still a motion in this meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 6, public hearing for a contract agreement. Contract agreement view ID 1533.06 for the quarters of Dutch Town for Signature Homes Association. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you. I'm Karen Kennedy with GWI Engineering. I'm here requesting approval of a contract development agreement for proposed 45-unit condominium development. The traffic and drainage impact study has been completed, reviewed, and approved by the Engineer Review Agency. The staff has reviewed the agreement and requested revision regarding the fire line. The requirements of the two studies and the staff comments have been incorporated into this agreement, which I believe y'all have a copy of, and we are requesting approval of that.
There was a change on the, and it was, they, we requested a change and it complied with it.
That's why I was getting ready to tell the commissioners, you did receive another sheet, and that's with the change on it. So if any commissioners have any questions or comments?
Neil, are you satisfied with everything else in the contract?
Yes, I did review it, and that's how I found the error.
Any other comments or que, any other comments or questions? Then we'll go ahead and open it up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come up and sign in.
Yes, sir. My name is John Taylor. I'm a lifelong resident of Ascension Parish. Been living across the street and approximately 200 feet down from there since 1971. I built my current home in 1976 that I live in today. And I, at one time, owned about 26 acres there. Of course, I, through family petition and stuff, I only own now about five and a half acres. I have some serious concerns about all the development going on on Highway 73 and the drainage. Currently, all the developments along there drain into the Highway 73 ditches and run in front of my house and run on down and eventually drains out through Bay Gudin. Excuse me. Over the last number of years, I've gotten water in my front yard and actually shut down Highway 73, which is the major highway. I've had water touch my slab twice in the last year, I guess. The problem is the initial rainwater. And fortunately, as the water builds up, Highway 73 is lower than the house, of course, so the water drains across the road and disperses on the property right now, which is, they're planting on concrete. My big problem, like I said, is drainage. Again, I don't know what the traffic impact studies show, but it used to be, I ran cows down Highway 73 and moved them from pasture to pasture. Today, it takes me 15 minutes to go get my mail. Highway 73 is a heavily traveled highway. So I'm really... So I'm really, like I said, just trying to understand exactly what's going on. I do know the property right next to theirs has been sold recently. It's going to be a doctor's office. I do know quite a bit of the property further down has been sold. So I'm just kind of concerned about the drainage problem. Thank you all for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Don?
Yes, my name is Don Borden. I own a business adjacent to this property, and I'm not here to oppose it, but I'm here, and it might not be the proper venue to address it, but the proposal is for 46 residences on my property line, and I'm concerned about security of my property. I have an office building there that no one's there at night. We're only there during the day for the work week. And they show a fence on this little plot, and I just want to make sure that that was, or if it could be, a requirement during the construction of and completed project. If any kind of restriction like that could be put in place, I'd be appreciative. This is not a building permit request, so I think that might be a little premature, but you're on record for it at this time. I don't have much else to say. Firm believer in property rights, but I think they're infringing a little bit unless they secure that site. There's 40, they got five and a half acres, and they're going to have 46 families on They're not going to stay there when they got eight acres of cut grass and a pond and a nice place to walk across the ditch. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? No one else. Ms. Kennedy?
Just a couple of quick notes. The proposed use that we have here is permissible in the existing zoning. We are only requesting approval of the contract development agreement tonight. But just a couple of points on what we have done in that development agreement. We did do a traffic impact study and a drainage impact study. That has been reviewed and approved. The drainage impact study showed no impact due to the proposed detention pond in the site, and all of that is detailed in the agreement. And also detailed in the agreement is a fence along the perimeter of the site, so there's no way that we cannot put the fence there. And this also will be a gated community, so it will be not quite as open for them to go roam the adjacent properties, but a little more difficult to get out and about. And I can answer any questions y'all have.
Has a developer met with any of the adjacent property owners? That might be the thing to do right now, to maybe explain a little bit what's going on with your development. So, you know, a little of the curiosity and maybe a little anxiety.
Like to go up there and do it?
No, no, I think the two of you could really, right now, I think, you know.
It might be a good idea, because I like to know what's going on, because when I get ready to develop mine, 42 folks don't show up here right.
Karen, what other developments has he done?
I brought pictures of, and I have copies for y'all as well. This is the same developer and going to be identical to the development on Old Perkins Road, the plantation.
By, now, tell me, located where?
On Old Perkins Road, across from Mancheck Plantation subdivision. This is the type of development. It's very upscale, 200,000-plus condominiums, so, yeah.
How many were built and how many are sold?
It is completely sold out, the plantation.
Forty-eight were built and all of them are sold.
And I want to go on record, I think when he came before us with that proposed development, I opposed it. And I will say that you have done a wonderful job with that development, and I compliment you for that job.
This one's very similar, but a little one more notch.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? All right, gentlemen and lady, we are only voting on the contract agreement. We're not voting on the development, just the contract agreement. So what's the wish of the commission?
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Alan Kraus to approve.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Item 7A, this is a public hearing to consider a business park site review. This is ID 1534.06, lots X-1 and Y-1, Ashland Industrial Park for Stephen Bobb.
Hi, my name's Tommy Tacino with the Design Bill Group, representing the Sealy Ashland Distribution Center. The project consists of a warehouse distribution center being built in a BP district and requires a formal site plan review, and that's why we're here.
Any comments or questions from the commission? There are no comments or questions from commissioners at this time. We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up and sign in, and you'll get your three minutes. No one wishing to speak? One more time, comments, questions from commissioners? I'll ask a question then. Lance, as far as staff, everything, everything was satisfactory?
Yes, sir, everything's satisfactory, yes, sir.
I'm going to move approval. Oh, open the public.
No, the public hearing, no one wanted to speak. Have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas?
Second.
Second by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you, Tom.
Item eight, public hearing to consider the following historical overlay district review. ID 1535.06, Investment Ascension Properties LLC for Danny Watts.
Good evening, I'm Danny Watts. This is a historic site overlay. If you may recall, I came before the commission September, or August 14th of last year for a financial institution for the same facility, for the same site. We're still doing the, in the meantime, my client acquired the property late February of this year, intending to build the financial institution. Hurricane Katrina has caused some delays in finding contractors. Our architect, who is a local architect, who has designed three branches for my client, is just too busy right now to get this branch, to design the branch for them, and they would like to use this architect. He knows banks, he's done three for them, and he's in the parish. So in the interim, we would like, we're here seeking approval for the buffer yard requirements for a modular facility, which I'll show you a little, there's something in, I think, the application you have, but a very poor quality of it. If this, how do I get this door? Just put it on there? That's a better quality. What it is, is it's a building, it'll have the physical appearance of a permanent facility. The bank will buy this building, put it on a concrete slab, and the next thing I want to show you, because that doesn't look quite much like a bank, but it's a better example than what's in the application, this is Mrs. Carroll's property to the north, the historic property in question, the Robert Penn Warren home. What my client tends to do, as much as is practical, which is in the application, is to try to design the exterior of this temporary building, this modular facility, with the porches and use landscaping so that it somewhat resembles that property, since we are within a historic district. And the estimated time is that the building will probably be there about two years. Again, it'll be on this slab landscaped, and then it'll be removed when the permanent structure is built and the concrete will be removed. And also, in your site plan that's in the application, where we had future potential buildings, number E, or letter E, that is the site of where this modular building would be. The approximate site, we haven't got any engineer out there to get the exact location.
Comments, questions from commissioners?
Go, one. In the comments, it said the structure would be removed once construction on the permanent building would begin? So you would have a customer base and then take the building away?
No, if it's what it says, it's supposed to say that the modular building will be removed once the permanent building is completed.
That's correct. I'm messed up.
Okay. I was trying to figure that one out.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Ms. June typed it wrong.
When I came here last year, there was a whole page missing on landscaping.
She is here.
Go ahead, Ms. June, defend yourself.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Two years seems a bit long.
Sharon, would you like, she's with the institution, if you'd like, she may can address that better than I can.
We're saying a maximum of two years. It could, it'll probably be less, but because of some of the delays we're seeing with the architect's schedule right now, we really want to use this architect, want to use him because he's local, and I have a lot of confidence in him. Contractor delays right now, skilled tradesmen, we just want to allow the time, so we're saying two years. We've met with him, and, you know, he's saying that once he puts out the plans, gets the bids back, we have the bid meeting, he's saying he could get it built probably nine months to 14 months, just depending on rain delays and things like that. So, could be less.
Are y'all willing to have that in a stipulation for a certain amount of time, that we would allow a temporary building to be on the premise?
As long as it's reasonable, you know.
Yeah, let me say, just say hypothetically, I'm sure they're going to do all kinds of things to please you. Suppose another hurricane comes and the architect cannot do it, would they be required to close this down and move it? Or would they be required to get another architect?
Could be required to come back here and ask for an extension.
Extension.
Well, first of all, let me, having worked on the historical site overlay ordinance, let me tell you something. The intent was never, ever to have anything to do with temporary buildings, period. Permanent buildings. There was, and it wasn't the amount of discussion that I would have expected, but there was Didn't want to start seeing temporary buildings. I mean, the most you'd want to see is maybe for our construction crew, because that is definitely a temporary building, but.
If I made it, I'm sorry.
At the same time, when you approached this commission last year, we were given information and as far as a proposal, and a revised proposal was submitted at the meeting, where extra buildings were added in that, and the commission was under no obligation to approve that, but they did. So my overall concern is, if they go ahead and they allow for this, all of a sudden I see problems coming up toward, you know, toward the end, and then extensions for it. And then we totally get away from historical site overlay ordinance. We create loopholes.
I respect what you're saying, sir, but if I may defend myself, I mentioned when I first stood up here that there was an error last year when I was here, and what you just alluded to was that error. We did submit the plan with those additional buildings, and Ms. June failed to get that to you. That was not my error. We did submit it.
I questioned staff about that, and they said they never saw it. So I.
Mr. Chairman, let me just add that we are keenly aware of the requirements of the historic site overlay district, and we are willing to comply with that. And the build-out of our permanent facility and incorporating the culture, the characteristics of that historic site, we want to blend in with that. We want to add to it as much as possible, and we're willing to do so with the temporary facility. We've opened a loan production office in Prairieville and have established a small customer base just in the last few weeks. We want to put the property use a little bit quicker than what we can with the current situation with the architect and contractors. So we're willing to put in a temporary facility there, anchored to this lab, give it as much permanent characteristics as possible with the roof line, and going over to the Carroll property with the contractor, let him look at the front design of this house and build out the front of it so that it blends in real nice. And we'll work out of that facility while the permanent facility is being constructed, and just as soon as that is complete, we'll move it off the site.
One other question, when you talk about starting the permanent construction, is that including all buildings?
No, we're going to focus on the financial institution.
And then what kind of timeframe are you looking at for the rest of the approved buildings?
It's going to go by market.
At whatever the market determines. The primary focus of the site was, again, for the financial institution. It just happened to be significantly larger than what was required, so whatever the market dictates in terms of time and the owner's priorities. The first priority is to get the institution built. So like I said, the point now is not to get those other buildings built, but that will happen based on market conditions.
And they will be professional when they're done. Our only plan is to do professional office suites, not strip shopping center. Something that will also blend in with the financial institution.
Does the owner of this property have a modular bank in Baton Rouge currently?
No, we do not. Some of the other locations that we have, we have modular banks next door to us.
Real quick, the landscaping that was in the original plan, is that intended to go in now as part of this, the buffer landscaping, the perimeter buffer?
As much as we can along the back property line, yes, we will. But considering construction, we're trying to preserve an oak tree on that property right now. We've met with an arborist, and we're doing everything we can to preserve that tree. And there'll be some care that we need to take while building the building to continue to preserve that tree. So we will put some landscaping along the back property line, we'll put some around the temporary facility, but it would not be too practical to do a whole lot while that construction is taking place with construction trucks going in and out.
I'm just more worried about the buffer, where it butts the historical area, in that general area. Okay.
Well, there is a natural tree line along that property right now, and we do not plan on doing anything with that natural tree line. I will add to it about five feet or so out with some landscaping that will somewhat partition the property, but I'll keep that natural tree line in place.
Excellent, okay.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I will say this, according to the landscaping, that Danny called me, and I went out and met with them and looked at the live oak tree and offered some advice. I gave that opinion to them last year. They were good enough to call and ask for an arborist. I gave them a couple of folks, local, that could help them out. From what I've seen from the street, they are working toward preserving the only piece of historicalness that's on that piece of property, this live oak tree. So I will say that so much for a developer, it's a new thing for our parish, for people to want to do that, and they did it, so, for whatever it's worth, I think that's a good step forward.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? I'll open it up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this property, please come up, sign in, and you'll get your time to speak. No one wishing to speak, last time. Comments, questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve with a condition that the modular, that it be a modular building by definition, and that it be permitted to be on site for a maximum of 24 months from the day he gets a building permit.
I have a motion to approve with condition by Julio Dumas. I have a motion to approve with condition by Julio Dumas.
Because this is a business, I'm gonna second that motion.
Seconded by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I want to abstain because of my visit to the site outside of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I have one abstention. Motion passes. Item 9, new business, commissioners have any new items of business? Item 10, old business, that we have the definition for B and B, Mr. Brock, or Mr. Parentin, whoever, whichever.
Okay, I think Paige sent me some stuff, basically what we need to do is y'all need to tell me what you want. How big, how many, what's the biggest size, and how long is the limitation on the stay? And I'll draw up an ordinance for y'all. There were various...
Maybe I'm a little dense, I thought we kind of covered this before because it was, uh, we talked about that, and I kept thinking we said...
Yeah, I never came to a result.
Eight people, or eight...
No, it was discussed, but nobody gave me an answer.
I didn't think it was 20 rooms altogether, that's, that's, that starts getting to a motel.
No, wait a minute, Lance, you were supposed to gather the APA stuff.
We had that. Somebody needs to tell me, y'all need to tell me what y'all want. I can't draw up ordinances unless y'all tell me what you want. There was a, we kind of left last time with a discussion of, okay, what, what we're gonna do it. Somebody's gotta tell me what they want.
Could you refresh my memory, what were the APA's require, averages?
I think it was 16, I was thinking.
16 guests.
Yeah, I guess.
16 guests.
Right, not 16 rooms, 16 guests.
16 guests, so that's what we decided last time.
And it goes into a timeframe too, I believe. Then there was a question...
I thought that's, I could have swore that's what we, we said at the time, we'd go with 16 guests. We, we said a number of, of people.
That's called by rooms.
Well, that would determine the rooms, because you're figuring two people for, for a room, so you're talking about eight rooms.
Well...
Well, that was the issue though, whether that meant rooms or, or people, because if you have 16 guests, what if I...
I can go back and look at that meeting, but I'm pretty sure we said people, 16 people.
And we never reached a resolution of that issue, of whether that meant eight rooms or 16 people, because if you have one room with, somebody with their three kids, does that count as, do you have empty, you make them have empty rooms?
Well, yeah, that becomes a, a regulatory nightmare for people to regulate.
And that's why I asked, you have to tell me what you wanted.
I have the minutes from last month, and it says the number of rooms or occupants in a, for a bed and breakfast. When does a bed and breakfast become a hotel or motel? What does the owner have to live, does the owner have to live in the bed and breakfast? What is the length of stay? And three versions were presented, and commission action was, Scott Courtwright, seconded by Mr. Page, made a motion to direct legal to begin drafting a bed and breakfast ordinance based on the discussion tonight.
You all gotta give me, I can't draft an ordinance without an answer.
Good call, Lance.
I don't, I don't make the ordinances, I just draft, y'all gotta tell me what you want, and I draw it up.
I, I looked up, I looked up Bed and Breakfast Association, American Bed and Breakfast Association, and I sent some information to O'Neill on that, on what they recommend. And, and basically, it was the, the proprietor, at mo, most of them does live on property. It was no more than eight to 10 rooms, no more than 16, 20 people max, with a short stay of no longer than three or four nights. And that was the overall overview of a bed and breakfast.
I will say this, I, I spoke to a, a couple, a friend of mine that owns a plantation in St. Francisville, and their response, I asked them for verbiage, they've been owning this bed and breakfast for quite a while, and, and this plantation, and their, their response was, they kind of frowned on limiting the stay, because, and the reasoning, I did the same thing, but the reasoning was good. Quite frequently, they have people that rent these plantations, bed and breakfasts, whatever, out, that are more upscale, they're more like a home, and they rent those things out to shoot a movie. For example, The Dukes of Hazzard was just recently shot in St. Francisville. That's big-time dollars for a community. If we say three to four nights, and I understand that most people may do that, but if we say three or four nights, we could be cutting ourselves out, or cutting that particular homeowner out of a longer stay period. So, that's fodder that I want to offer, you know, to think about, you know, if we restrict up to three or four nights. She also said too, it goes back to traditional thinking, bed and breakfast, you do have to serve breakfast. And we had that discussion, what kind of meal, and is it, you know, that kind of thing. But the traditional bed and breakfast, obviously, provides a bed and serves breakfast.
American Bed and Breakfast Association said that it could either be a continental or full breakfast, and it was totally up to the proprietor.
That's what I was told as well.
Well, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you, I, I think we also need to focus on things that are enforceable. Number of beds is something that's enforceable through the building department permit process. You know, I think that the owner resides there, it's borderline enforceable. I mean, so long as he shows it on the plan that that's his residence and he identifies that it's that, you, you, we would have to rely on that. But, but it's something that he could, he could actually document on a plan. You know, and I think the only other thing that's, that's truly enforceable is, is the number of rooms and the fact that they have to provide that morning meal. You know, and, but other than that, I mean, I think counting bodies becomes difficult to impose on staff, you know, something like that, so. That would be, you know, and I think that's consistent with what, what, what the industry does. They rely on those things.
In general, you talked about a plantation. I don't see those things coming up every day for bed and breakfast. It's gonna be smaller buildings, is what we're talking about. If somebody wants to go and build a, build a, a house or a building, and they're going to...
A plantation in association with a bed and breakfast, generally, that...
But that, what I'm saying is, that's, that's kind of specialized in a way.
Well...
I mean, you, because some of, a lot of the plant, especially you go up St. Francisville, you, you know, they're, they're larger buildings. They're gonna have more rooms. You still have to take into consideration somebody actually coming and building a brand-new structure, or renovating an old or smaller home.
Most bed and breakfasts are a result of, of retrofitting an existing structure. You know, nine out of 10 hotel rooms in Key West are bed and breakfasts. And, and they're basically anywhere from five, six to 15 rooms, you know, that, that, you know, where they took a building and converted it into bed and breakfast. And you can walk in the front door and realize, you know, I'm in the original house, and the garage and everything else has been converted into bedrooms.
Can we take a, can we do one thing at a time? Can we have, get a consensus of how many rooms, if you tell me that, that's one of the key components.
I'll give you a start?
Eight to 10.
Eight, well, let's have a number, we gotta have, we gotta have to define what a bed and breakfast is for our ordinance, because if we say eight to 10, then it's 10.
10.
All right, number of rooms, 10.
Is everybody comfortable with 10?
Okay.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's...
Proprietor on site?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
About we...
Breakfast served.
Yes.
Yes.
Anything else?
And breakfast you should probably...
I would, I would, as far as length of stay...
I'm a little, I'm a little bent on that one.
No, man. That, I mean, you know, you, you're talking about somebody filming a movie.
I'm telling you, we have a push in...
That's something that could be an extent, that's kind of an extending, set of extending circumstances too.
We have a push in the state right now to open up a market specifically at getting those people in the state. And if we limit that, we could be, as a parish, cutting ourselves out of some of that. I don't want, I don't think...
I'm gonna give that a try and see how that does, if, if we would have problems with it, we could change it, but...
I'm willing to not give it a try.
Well, the question is, is who's gonna regulate that? Who's gonna, who's gonna be responsible in making sure that, you know?
Have you been here three days or...
Mike, you gotta move out, you stayed here three days too many.
I know Lance isn't gonna go in for that.
Do we have to, do we have to have...
No, we don't have to limitation on the time.
Do we have to say anything about how they stay?
What about a minimum, you have a minimum?
How long they stay?
No minimum, so I can say one night?
Yeah, you have a lot of those honeymoon bed and breakfasts. Okay, so you want a bed and breakfast with a maximum of 10 rooms. The proprietor must be on site, and breakfast must be provided on site. Anybody else got anything before I go draw an ordinance?
Could you throw some verbiage in there that talks about it, the facade, it looking quaint or historical or fitting into the culture? I mean, is it, is it just a bland building, or what? I don't know, I have no idea, but is that verbiage or...
I'd, I'd, right now, I'd leave that alone, and let's just go ahead and let him get something. He's got more than enough right now, I can assure you.
Okay.
If you want, we, we can let, we can, we can, we can put it in where they can plant Bartlett pears in the yard.
Okay, that came up through here.
Homeless House?
Yeah. It's still a hotel. I mean, they're gonna have to go to the building codes and that as a hotel. It's gonna have to go to the fire marshal, it's gonna have to have fireproof and everything else. You know, what they call it, does it matter?
It made a difference in a particular point, because you couldn't have put a hotel in the zoning that it was. And we didn't have a bed and breakfast, so he, we didn't have a definition of a bed and breakfast, so they called it a bed and breakfast.
Okay, that's why I wanted to...
That's why we need to define a bed and breakfast.
Is everybody in agreement?
Yes.
All right. Item 11, subcommittee report.
We're still working on zoning in the parish, meeting two weeks from tonight as subcommittee.
I will be on vacation, so if y'all still want to have it...
Three weeks from tonight.
Okay, all right, yes, sir.
Is that it? Item 12.
I just want to set the record straight, and I know this is way past, but I just want to take up for Ms. June, that guy with Mr. Watts, and y'all probably know that. He didn't give us that information before the meeting, when he said that he gave it to Ms. June, and I just want to set that straight, that Ms. June didn't, didn't do anything wrong, so I just want to let y'all know.
Did you mistake the...
I can, I can say stuff about June, he cannot say stuff about June. And that might not mean much, but it does to me so.
Thank you, Lance. You know, one of the things that, that, our staff does take a beating, both the planning and zoning, and I think we've got an excellent staff, we have a, an excellent ERA and, and legal counsel as well. And, I mean, with a amount of work that, that they have, that's put before them every month to get, get the package ready and all, there's times I'm surprised there's not, you know, we have a screw-up, a mix-up or whatever, and I'm surprised there aren't more of them.
You're right.
So, I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let's go home and eat.
Is that a motion to adjourn? A motion by Ju, Julio, to adjourn, seconded, seconded by Alan, is there any objection or discussion? Motion passes.